Maggie, we're ready.
Good morning, everybody. This is really exciting and I'm excited by the turn-on. And I also would like to welcome those who are on live feed and couldn't be here. I know that you have the same interest in what's going on as everybody else here, so I welcome you. And I'd like to begin with a prayer, but even before I begin with a prayer, that's Father Michael, even before I begin with a prayer, I'd like to set up my prayer. Today is a feast day in the church that's brand-new. It was established by Pope Francis and it comes the day after Pentecost. And Pentecost, they were all gathered in the upper room, didn't know what was gonna happen, what the agenda was, but God wanted to do something because they were there. And they were to be the leaders of the new faith community. And Mary, the mother of Jesus, was there. And the feast day is Mary, mother of the church. And she's here with us today, and I would like to read a little reflection written by Pope Francis. And then we'll say Hail Mary together. "In the heart of the church, Mary shines forth. She is the supreme model for a youthful church that seeks to follow Christ with enthusiasm and docility. And while still very young, she accepted the message of the angel and opened her heart and soul. We're struck always by the strength of the young Mary's yes." The strength of those words, "Be it done," that she spoke to the angels. There was no, this was no merely passive or resigned acceptance, or a faint yes, as if to say, "Well, let's give it a try and see what happens." Mary did not know the words, "Let's see what happens." She was determined, she knew what was at stake, and she said yes without thinking twice. She accompanied the sufferings of her son and supported him by the gaze, by her gaze at him with her heart. She shared in his sufferings and was not overwhelmed by it. She was the woman of strength, and only a young woman, a young girl, when she said yes, who supports and accompanies, protects and embraces. She is the guardian of hope. Mary was the young woman whose heart overflowed with joy, whose eyes reflected the light of the Holy Spirit, et cetera, et cetera. And then she says, "In her presence, the young church was born as the apostles went forth to give birth to a new world." Today, Mary is the mother who watches over us, her children on our journey through life, often weary and in need, anxious for the light of hope not to fail, and that is our desire. The light of hope fails. So let us pray, Hail Mary. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. Just my own personal remarks to you. Something like over, I think over 10 years ago, I was ready to retire. And possibly at that time, go back to Ireland for a while, because I missed my family. And Bishop Kurtz, oh Bishop Kurtz, Bishop Sticker came to me. I had worked hard, I felt a little tired running All Saints Parish. And Bishop Sticker came to me and he said, "Will you give me four more years?" And he unveiled a little, he said, "I have a big thing coming up and I don't want to move you. You're well-established in the parish, I don't want to put in somebody new, and we're going to have a big fundraiser, and I just want you to be here." I have to say, it was a long four years. You know, and I don't mean a bad four years, but it was a long four years, because somehow or another I had to let go of my own hopes, my own dreams, or anything. But I didn't have any either. It was just, I've gotta get out of here, retire. We all know that, this is who we are as a people. And it came to the end of four years, and I bring that back to you because what he wanted to do, the Home Campaign, you remember? Okay, well, you weren't the only ones who had a Home Campaign. We all had it, and it was a difficult time, and it was a hard set. And things happened in parishes, and certainly in mine, and so when it was over, I said, "Thank God." I went to the bishop and I said, "I'm thinking of retiring." And he said, "Would you do me a favor?" And I say that because the only reason I'm here is because the Diocese of Knoxville didn't me a favor. And they allowed me to begin again and start again. And I am so grateful for that outreach by the diocese. So what the bishop said, "Would you do me a favor?" And I said, "Okay." He said, "Would you go to Fairfield Lake for me?" And that's why I'm here. I said, "Yes." And it has been a rich experience. One of the things I was thinking about myself when I was coming, I was saying to myself, "I absolutely love being Catholic. I absolutely love the church. I absolutely love the message of Jesus." My struggle is loving Jesus. You might see a distinction. I love His word. I believe in His word. I think His way is unbelievably fantastic. And I believe He's God, and I believe He's Jesus, and whatever, but looking for Him, He's hard to find. But His words have brought me here, my hope in seeing Him. And I have thought of it, and I look back, and I said, "I've seen Him many times." But it's not this image of Jesus in the sky, who is glorified and beautiful, and... I don't know His face, I've only found His face among you. It's the church. And day in and day out, I'm called to see His face in you. I hope one day I will see it as us all gathered together in the body of Jesus, and it would be magnificent. But here on earth, some people are given the privilege of seeing Him face-to-face, and motivated, and it goes out to the church to motivate. But I've seen Him in you, and I love that this feast of Pentecost is, we didn't plan it this way, is the feast of Pentecost is the day we opened the church, took off our masks, and began to smile, and as I said, for the first time coming to Mass, I shaved. But that, and then as I come and then realize that the feast of the first day of the church, where we go forward in the name of Jesus, to manifest Jesus by our own spirit living in us, I get it wrong, you get it wrong, I get it right, you get it right. And the church is this experience of reconciling with one another, and yet at the same time standing up for ourselves, looking for our own way, seeing it the way we see it, and the spirit comes upon us and makes us one again. That's why we have reconciliation in the church. It's an acknowledgement of that struggle and starting again. And the thought that came into my mind this morning when I was thinking, how, I brought with me the Death Register. And these are the names of the people that have gone before you. And the very first name, I don't know who they are, on the book. And it's, it only, this book went with everybody, every other priest, but this one begins with Father Gouaveur, who was one of the priests that was here, and the first name, where is it? How did we get this, Mary? I did it earlier. Well, we'll take this one. Cecilia Busto. Anybody know her? She was one of us. That's the key. And I thought about going through it and really highlighting great names of people that you know and loved. And I said, "No, the tiniest one among us, who claimed Saint Francis, who knew they were Catholic, and came not knowing where it would go." All those names, and I look at the last three pages in the book that Mary puts out in front of me, every time somebody in the parish has died since I came here. And it's amazing to see my name page after page after page after page, and you know that. Is there anybody here who was here when the parish began? Now, okay, who thinks that the longest-serving member in the parish since the parish was opened? Anybody think they are? We find out what kind of years are involved here. Oh, he says, "How about Raleigh?" No, by the way, I said, "26." 26 years. Anybody older than that? How long? In 82, 1982. Who's got that demand? But anyway, I won't have to go through it, but what I'm really just trying to establish, just as we begin, is when I came here and I came here to the parish, we were in many ways reeling from the Home Campaign from years before, promises made, promises not received, all that sort of thing. It's the life of the church. And at the last meeting that we had, we presented a plan as to where we go forward and how we go forward from here on out. And just like in the early church, we had giants. Giants who came here to our parish to retire into this area, and instead have become deeply involved, just like myself. Good, bad, or indifferent, they brought their talents just as they were, and they are gonna make a presentation to you. And my hope is that that spirit will be on us. We've got the giants of Fred Holtz. May I ask you, how old are you? 82. And what was your position before you came here and you came to retire?
I was a nuclear engineer at a plant in California.
And you're sure putting those talents to work here. Sometimes we do have nuclear stuff going on, but we don't glow in the dark. And yourself?
I'm 73, and I spent 40 years in architectural, real estate management, construction for financial firms. I was senior vice president when I left.
And here you are making drawings for us, free of cost, with your talent and your gifts. We can't afford you. We have others on my list in that committee. We've got Joe? Joe Sugar? Where were you before you got here? How old are you?
77.
And what did you do before you got here?
I'm a mechanical engineer, and I've ran my own company for three-plus years.
And not ready to retire, and we have, where's Raleigh? Raleigh, if I may. What were you before you came, how old are you?
I'm 73.
And what were you before you came here?
I was a buyer for a large manufacturing company, Procter &amp; Gamble, but your name dropped. So I've spent 33 years with them.
And Red came here to retire?
Came here to retire, yes.
And I'm sure you remember that incident or period or event called the Home Campaign. Do you remember that?
I certainly do, because I was the chair for the parish.
And we're still at work, and that work we're still standing on, and hopefully we will go forward with it. Anyway, I will hand this meeting over because I think, we get the sense that maybe, I can tell you, all the people here who are retired have involved themselves in so many ways, offering their talents and their gifts. We have a rich parish here, and the meeting is not just about this meeting. It's about, I believe, the church and catching the vision of where we're going to go forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Father. I think I'm, I think I'm speaking for everybody when I'm saying you're coming here to the parish is a blessing for our parish. You're really happy you're with us. Joe, can I have the first slide there? This is the overall agenda for the meeting. Father has completed number one. Number five, you notice we have a question and answer session there, so we ask that you hold your comments and your questions until we get to that point. That'll allow us to get through the presentation somewhat of a timely manner. Item two is the longest presentation. There's five topics in that item there, and I think 11 slides, so we have a sub-agenda for that. Joe, can you bring up two? Okay, this is the agenda for the presentation that David and I will make. I'll do a brief introduction, then we'll review the needs analysis. Many of you have seen this in the past because it was presented in the last time on the meeting. Then David will present the project. That's gonna be a rather lengthy one, but hopefully you'll get a good appreciation for what the project's all about. Then I'll give the status of the project, and David will finish up with the estimated cost, which unfortunately is changing rapidly. So going to the introduction, I was going to introduce the team members that Father did a real good job of doing.
Red, could I ask you just, I know it's an interruption, but these things are pretty important. I did just introduce, associated with the actual building program, but there are others who have been on the financial aspect of it and a leadership direction. And I would just like to point out, how old are you? 82. And Jack came here, and I believe just before you came here, you had meetings, and you stood up in the middle of the meeting room and said something like, "Look, I'll take this on, and I will address how we go forward," and you have taken on that leadership. What were you before you came here? Many things.
Many things. The last thing, I worked for some investment companies buying and selling small businesses.
Thank you. And you put those to work, but not only the financial dimension of it, but also working with the workings of how people work together and do things and leadership, et cetera. I appreciate that. And I think we're also very blessed. How old are you, Joe? I don't think we want to be saying, but that's all right.
I'm 79.
79, and Joe came on board before I came here, also is our financial advisor and controller and all that. Not controller, but those kinds of things. And what were you before you came here?
Well, I spent 40-some-odd years of manufacturing as a manager of finance.
And we thank you for that. I just wanted, because these will be the presenters, and I believe giants who are retired, who said, "We have much to give as church," and I thank you for that. Okay?
Thank you, Father. As I mentioned, Father introduced all the team members, but I do want to say that Joe Sugar is chairperson for the building and the grounds, so having him in this position, we've been able to coordinate the church repair and maintenance work with the design of the projects, so we're not duplicating efforts, and that's been a big help to us. Looking at the introduction again, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history of past events associated with the building addition. About three years ago, they had the Home Campaign that Father mentioned about. Looney was in charge of that. They got into several, excuse me, into several building concepts at that time. Unfortunately, the previous priest put all that effort on hold. We did have the church renovation, and Looney did a real good job of that. About two years ago, the church formed an improvement committee, and the responsibility of that committee was to look at the needs of the church. Several needs were identified, along with the criteria that needed to be looked at for satisfying those needs. Most of those needs were satisfied already. You're aware of a lot of them. The sheen hall renovation, the renovation of the restrooms, renovation of the offices, the downstairs storage, the replacement of this poor old wall here, those were all completed. And I believe Joe Nana is gonna talk about how much of the Home Campaign money went to those projects. Yeah, there were a lot of little ones, all the lighting here, and the rectory, and several other, the insulation in the roof, those were all completed. All started with the identification of needs, with the improvement committee. Joe, can I have the next slide? Okay, the two remaining needs that didn't get satisfied over the two years there, and they're associated with the building addition. That is to provide additional classrooms and meeting spaces, and have an office that's more functional than the existing office. The criteria that goes along with that, Joe, can you move that up a little bit, please? The criteria that had to be satisfied to meet those needs are, the classrooms, the development of the classrooms and meeting space had to be within the sheen hall building and at the same level. Now, the reason for that is that we have a lot of parishioners that have a hard time negotiating steps, so that was important on. The office floor plan had to be more functional than the existing office, and it had to be more secure. And Father wanted adequate space for all the offices. He probably know by going into the existing office, it's not a safe environment over there. If somebody wanted to get in and cause harm to the office staff, they're in the reception area and with no other barriers before, the receptionists can really get a good look at them, so that's not a safe environment there. The other criteria was that we wanted the church to be more welcoming and more visible and accessible to anybody that drives by, including parishioners, visitors. Right now, the office is in the back, a lot of visitors don't even know that. So that desire to have it more visible required that we have the project in front of the church here. So with that, with those needs, and then as I mentioned, you've seen this before, and many of you had input way back in that improvement committee on what these needs are. We had, we reached parishioners through the committees to get your input. So with that, Joe, can we have the next slide here? David's gonna give up and present the project, and hopefully he'll get a good feel for all the projects that can slide that depict that project.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here, and for those that are viewing us live feed, thank you for joining us well. Thank you, Father, for leading us in this, and hopefully the Holy Spirit will guide us through the right thing to do here. I'd just like to point out that this is a rendering of the addition here that you see in this area here. And the existing church, as you know, is over this way here. So the sheen hall's in behind, you actually can't see the existing sheen hall. It's actually in behind this. It looks somewhat similar, but this is the new area. Sheen hall is actually behind that. So the new addition is located on the south side, and new ramp structures and stairs and things of that nature have to go into that area. There's no representation of actual final landscaping other than what you see in, just to give the perspective some substance there. So in the subsequent slides that I'll show, you'll kind of see some of that. If you could go into the floor plan, which I'll look at next.
Can you point out that white brick is the floor level?
Yeah, Joe, if you would just go back to for a moment, please. Yeah, that's an important part. Thank you for it. This line here is a white brick. That's the actual floor level of the new building. And as you know, there's quite a small block there back into the current parking area, which is actually over here a little bit. Just so that you get a sense of it, well, actually I'll show that a little later. There's a sense of the extension, how far that extension actually comes out, because the existing sheen hall is about this line here. So, yeah, move that up a bit, Craig. Thank you. So the existing sheen hall line is here, right there. And the restrooms that you are aware of are right there. Eric's office is currently right here, and then you've got the library partially there. The vestry is here, and the maintenance facility is there. So you can see the amount of extension that comes out this way as well down here. Now, just to kind of point out, this would be the new entrance up front, which would, as Fred mentioned, give great visibility and access and more welcoming environment. We have the two offices here. The financial office, Father's office, would be here. Music office in here. We have an extra office there, a conference room, and a secure, the safe. And there's gonna be a drop, drop on this side, the drop to the safe, and this would be a secured locked area. And then we've got a new conference area here with dividing partitions, and then we would expand, wall comes out there and expand it, conference area in here. So we're adding, as Fred mentioned, under the needs and requirements, some additional space in conference area. The plan, as Fred mentioned, this door here would be a locked door, and then when visitors come in to gain entrance, it would have the push button or something that would go through, and that entrance would be through here generally, with the general public coming in here. And we're gonna show the stairs and things of that nature on another slide here. So as you can see, the area marked in yellow there is all the new concrete work, and there's quite a bit of new concrete work out there for accessibility into the facility. And it's all ADA compliant, Americans with Disabilities Act. And so you have a ramp that comes up here, and actually the ramp goes around contract into here. This is actually a new set of stairs here. And then you have a new sidewalk area out front. It's a landscaping that'll be done in here. This also shows if during construction, well, not if, when during construction, if the project was ahead. The contractor needs to have space for all the materials and access and building site. And this is what we call a lay-down area in here. So this area would actually be fenced off during that. So we would have the parking entrance over here. The parking entrance here would still be viable. You would just have to go in around the backside over here into the sanctuary. Parking would still be available except for this room here on all the other parking areas out here and on this side of the church as well.
There'll be no through traffic?
Yeah, they won't be, they won't be able to get any through traffic through here. So cycle around there back through this main entrance that's over at this location here. If there's drop off here, you'd have to circle around.
This would probably be a good slide to point out the difference between the renovation area and the new construction.
Yeah, and can you go back to the floor plan for that, Joe, if you want?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just make you back to it for a second. So if you look at this space here, it's about 3,400 square feet. But then we've got about another 800 square feet in here that has to be renovated and things of that nature. And I think it's worthy of pointing out at this point in time that we had extensive discussions with the fire marshal out of Nashville because you're building a new building, but it's going to be separated. So that, this wall over here, the end wall over here, all requires a two-hour fire separation in here. And then interpretations by the fire marshal and the like have determined that this wall there needs to be, because it's up against the existing sanctuary, as they called it, even though it's, backs up to a restroom. The fire marshal interprets this as a high-risk area because of the congregation that you get over in the sanctuary. So anyway, we would have to get this wall here for a special design, which allows not only a two-hour fire rating, but if there were such a disastrous occurrence, that this wall would have to stand during that whole situation. So it requires a little additional structural work, foundation work and the like. And so that was a bit of a challenge getting through that, but it was something necessary. So you say, well, why talk about that? Well, because of the way you're dividing this from the fire protection service, it prevents us from, I don't want to say prevent, it requires us not to, not to be able to be required to put a sprinkler system in this building. And that's a very expensive solution. It's really not needed because of the distance that you have for exiting here and here anyway. It's really not a required business to have in the building. So that was an enormous process we went through. We think we did fine, satisfied the needs of the state and the fire marshal and the like. And then we've got renovated areas in here, obviously, for, you know, the doors, have to do some things with the doors and the ceiling and the electric, electrical, mechanical. The thing is that, you know, the next slide, Joe, the things that you don't see on plans like this is all of the detail, you know, similar to what Fred was talking about on the renovation of Sheen Hall here. You don't see all the things above this ceiling that transpired, all the insulation, all the electrical, all fire enunciation needs and the things that are like, things that are hidden behind the walls. And I can tell you that Fred and Joe spent an enormous amount of time over here building, building, bringing this building back to standards. And that was no easy challenge. They did a great job in doing that. So.
Do you want to start?
In this area here, this is the, this to be renovated in that. So you've got a total of over 4200 square feet total that, that were actually affected. Plus the parking areas, drainage, drainage, parking, et cetera, out here and all the things that are required. We all didn't get a drill blade, we know how the, and we just recently saw it up in the head of her story with that storm that came through, trees have about three foot depth in the roots. Similar circumstance here, that rock is not very far below the surface that you see today. Excavation work and things of that nature to accommodate this building and flow and water, et cetera, et cetera. The simple things that are required there. Things that are hidden that you say, well, why did the things cost what they cost or why does it take so long to go through the analysis? You know, we had to get a special environmental, not environmental, a, call it an engineering group out to study the subsurface materials and things of that nature to determine the structural requirements.
David, one more point. Can you point out that our response in front there will lose?
Well, yeah, it's obvious here, I think. Well, in the next slide, I'll show that a little better. So go to that slide, Joe. So this might help you see that a little better from a layman's perspective. This is an aerial view of that. And so again, this would be the construction laydown area. But you see how the building protrudes out over the existing parking. So, and then there's going to be a sidewalk coming along here and here. So we are going to lose the majority of these spaces. And it depends on the final whether we can keep two or three up here. I don't know that just yet until we get, get that landscaping and stuff done. But it looks like the majority of these spaces are going away. These won't remain and we'll have to relocate the handicap parking. And again, the doors, like the door here, there's going to be a door into the addition over here and the main addition, the main entrance into the addition for the office staff will be in here.
So with the, David, do you too?
This plan does not show the structural concrete blockways and railings and things that you need over this section.
Well, you know, the two entrances here are mass, the only two that.
Well, yeah, the only two you're going to have now would be this one here during the construction would be this one and obviously through the main area here. So this next slide, I did a little sketch here to show you what happens. That was on the outside we saw. So now what happens internally? Maybe just scoot it up just a hair. Yeah. So the construction, move it down just a hair there, Joe, please. There you go. So we would put a construction barrier in along here. This is the existing Sheen Hall, all of this area here. And so the contractor's going to have everything on the right-hand side of this wall here because all that will be in the construction zone. So what we did is we took all these existing furniture in Eric's office and put it here under temporary mastery of all the cabinets and the like of here. The maintenance area, the fire room down over there, we brought through here. And then the library shelving is all shown here. And that's all to scale with the table. And as we all know, this area is used heavily. So during construction, it'll be used as well for meetings and the like that we need this table in here during mass times and like obvious requirements here and setup space and things of that nature. So we, we did a plan to say, you know what, instead of going out and renting portable buildings or whatever we do to facilitate things, try and minimize, minimize move costs and the like, we'll see what utilization we can have with Sheen Hall. And then there's still some place to the setup space and things of that nature, probably about, that's close to 50% of that space up to, let's see, since the backside, two windows you just really taken back there from the second seat up where Joe's wife says sitting back there. Can you hold that sponge for us?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll go up to about there. So there's still going to be lots of space, a lot remaining in Sheen Hall. I think you're going to take it over from here, right? And I'll be glad to answer any questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I hope that gave you a good feel for what the project's all about. And again, we can display these slides to answer any of your questions at the end here. Joe, can you go to, no, no, go down to, I believe nine. You may be asking, well, what happens to the old office over here when the office staff moves forward into the front area? Basically, we're quite, the way it is, will be no structural changes, but we're going to furnish it with tables and chairs and that'll be work areas for committees to work in. We can have small meetings in that area and the garage will remain as a storage area. So we're going to leave it that way for three or four years and maybe later after funds are available, we may renovate the inside of that. There you go. Looking at the status of the project. We divided this into three sections here. Work that's been completed, that's the work that's in progress. And then the next step is the project's approved to proceed. The, all the architectural work, the engineering, the design are complete. Now, all the associated construction drawings are complete. I might say that David and I spent a lot of time on those drawings, making sure they were suitable for our project. The fire marshal and coach department have approved those drawings. And as David mentioned, the fire marshal made the change in the design, which unfortunately increased the cost over $30,000. The drawings are now finalized and stamped by engineers licensed in the state of Tennessee. So they're ready to go out to bid for construction. We, we decided maybe a month ago to manage a project in-house with our own forces, the project team that Father introduced. So we wrote our own specification at that time to allow that to happen. The, initially, we were going to go with a fixed price contract. Because of the uncertainty with cost and everything else in the world today, we decided to convert that to a cost reimbursable contract. So we're going back to that specification and make that change. We're also developing a process and questions to go out to bidders, to, or out of contracts to decide which contractor we want to bid on this job. Now, we want, want to have local contractors because we found several of them that do really quality work and they're, we think we'll get a better price out of them. And being locally, their cost will, their reimbursable cost will be lower. We, we do have one individual that is insisting on doing all the excavation work for the project, including all trenching for the foundations and the underground utilities. Now, our negotiations with this individual are not going too well because he has contacts in very, very high places. So to understand our predicament, you need to know who this individual is. You can understand our predicament there. I had a heck of a time getting that tractor away from Father. He wanted to do his flower business. Next slide, Joe. Sorry, Father. Do I need to go to confession after the meeting? Okay, back to the work in progress here. We've had several meetings with Father, the finance council, the office staff on the status of the project, hoping to get approval to proceed. We've also had discussions with the diocese on what we're doing. So we're getting ready for that. And of course, we're here now to get your feedback on the project to see if you, what your feelings are about it. If the project's approved to proceed, we'll go out and interview contractors and determine the bidding contractors. We'll go through the formal bidding process. And once those bids come in on the due date, there'll be the four team members that Father mentioned, plus Joe Nana, will all open those bids at the same time. So we will have everything above table here. We, once we have a contract recommendation, we'll go through the staff for approval and then to the diocese and finally into the construction phase. There you go. Next slide. David's going to give you kind of the budget process that we went through to come up with estimated cost. You can leave that down like that for a moment, Joe.
Yeah, now I get the easy part. So this is a challenging area because as a lot of you know, construction has been, construction costs and construction have been, been a challenge in the last 18 months. And we were flying pretty good at the beginning of this project a couple of years ago when we were looking at costs and felt very good about them. But we've seen some major changes. COVID-19 seems to be the, you know, the backstop for all, all things that people are talking about are recent changes in the last few years. And that, that is one of them, which affects a lot of the things in this project. But what we did is we went through trade by trade in conjunction with some construction companies back and forth and discussions and the like, talking about, starting with the concrete excavation, foundation, the base structure of the building, the roofing materials, the interior drywall, the electrical, the mechanical, all the things that are involved in windows, doors, hardware, all the things that it takes, you know, ceiling, lighting, all the things that it takes to make up the. Because what I showed you earlier on the requirement for the needs for the ramps and things of that nature, actually about almost, well, it's not 10%, but if you took, it's probably, given the cost of the project, and I'll tell you that right now, it's going to be about $235 to about $280 a square foot. You say, wow, that's a lot. Well, compared to maybe what it was five years ago, it seems like a lot. As an example, the racket facility that Eric played is just finishing up over there on Stonehenge. Their budget allowance that they've had in there equates to $250 a square foot. And if you've seen that building, it's just a sloped metal roof siding. There's not much to the interior. They do have a little bit of plumbing and restroom facilities going in, which we don't have a lot of. But it's pretty basic and that, and that was a contracted price that they did last year. As you know, F and G have Knoxville building that. So given what we're looking at, we're hoping to still stay within that range. What has caused these things, probably most of you have read or heard about lumber costs going up extensively over the past little while. Well, that's not the only thing. Other materials, metals have gone up dramatically. We've got commercial windows and doors going in here. Those things have increased. HVAC, heating and air conditioning and the like, steel, it's all taken a jump. Shortage of materials, you can see that, and high demand that we're seeing actually here in the Glade, pretty much most of the country. If you had gone to one of these local builders a couple of years ago, a few years ago and said, okay, I'd like you to build a house. When can you start? When can you finish? You would have got something like, I can start in probably three or four months and I can finish eight or nine months after that. Well, today, I can't start for 15 months. I can't even start for 15 months. And B, it's probably going to take 12 months or more to build it. Well, why is that? Shortage of materials, shortage of laborers. And actually, I, I had a story come to me this week about a contractor had his, some of his trades come in and say, if you want us to finish this house for you, you're going to have to pay us more. And the contractor, contractor's already said to him, to them, to that group, we're almost underwater in this project. You made a contract with me, you'll have to finish it. So I don't know where it ended up, but that's just a little handily of a story. Story, anyway. So our estimate at this point in time, if you want to scroll it up, Joe. Anyway, so our estimate at this point in time, if you want to scroll back, Joe, based on their seeds, is probably around that. And if you take 4,200 square feet that we've got, that equates to around $230 to $240 a square foot. So that's kind of where we are. As Fred mentioned, we've actually changed the thought process and how we would, this gets a go ahead, how we would manage the project. And that would be cost plus. A little more difficult to manage, probably the better result in numbers. And we're going to have to fine tune everything, every contract that comes through the door, starting with the excavation of the project, the site layout. We'd use a general contractor, they would use subs. And then we would look at each of the subs that they're going to hire. We would look at what they're going to do, what their costs are, what their profits and overhead is and the like, and try and manage that as efficiently as we can. So with that, if you want to add anything before we go to questions and answers?
No, I think we're finished with our presentation. I hope you got a good feel for the project. We're going to, can you go back to the slide number one, Joe, please? We're going to have Joe Nanna get up and tell us about the financial report and, Joe. I don't know if I like this. I like to hit the hard part. Anyhow, you know, when you look at the cost of this project, Joe, anyhow, right there? When you look at the estimated cost of this project with $975,000, actually, naturally, we don't have $975,000 in our bank right now to support this project. What we do have, and I think I've let everybody know what the financial information that I put out, the letters that I put out in the bulletin last month, that we have a little over $500,000 in our building fund right now. We plan to have another $20,000 added to that building fund between now and the end of our fiscal year in June. And my goal is to add another $80,000 to that fund between now and the end, between July 1st and December 31st. So it'd give us around $600,000 to support this particular project. Now, in mind, if this thing is approved, if we're looking at $975,000, naturally, we have to borrow the money or we have to seek some help from our parishioners. But if we had to borrow the money from the diocese, and it has to be from the diocese because we can't borrow it from anywhere else, and they charge us a percentage, they'll charge us a rate, and their rate right now is 3.2%, and they charge 1% publicly. So when you look at that, if we had to borrow $400,000 next year, or let's say, let's see the program, we can, like David said, let's say we can't start construction for maybe 12 months, then we'll have more money sitting in our building fund as a direct result of generosity in your obituary collections, because that's where the money comes from. So if we had to borrow $400,000 today from the diocese, it would cost us $3,000, $36,000 a month, a year to borrow those funds. $3,000 a month to borrow $400,000 over a 15-year. If you borrow 400, you have to pay it back. We have to pay back $540,000. So the diocese collects an additional $140,000 of the money that we borrow. So the less we have to borrow, if it's approved, and we don't, the less we have to borrow and the more we can save in our own account, the less we're going to have to pay back to the diocese. Maybe we won't have to borrow the money at all from the diocese. All of dark parishions. But we've done an excellent job over the last few years of building up our cash reserves. Back in the beginning of 2019, fiscal 2019, we had one month worth of operating cash to support the needs of the parish. Now we have five, a little over five months' worth of operating cash exclusive of what we have in savings. So we've got, we have operating cash to support our needs, even if we didn't collect another dime, we still have over five months' worth of cash to support the operations of the church. So we've done a great job. And I think this is something that we have to consider and think about because we've done a lot. You know, when we, I think Dave or Fred alluded to the projects that we undertook with the expansion of the sanctuary and Sheehan Hall, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of money. You know, initially, we had, we had a capital, a previous capital campaign fund of $308,000. On the current capital campaign fund, we collected another $433,000 from the diocese, leaving us with a little over $700,000 in cash. Now, we've used a good portion of that to expand, a little over $200,000 to expand sanctuary, and we spent almost $100,000 to renovate Sheehan Hall. So you can see that we've been putting those funds to good use. It still leaves us with enough cash to continue to support our needs, plus provide additional funds for whatever building projects we undertake. So I think we're in fairly good shape, but we're going to need some help either from the diocese or our parishioners if it's approved to support this project.
I should mention one other thing. The roofs on the sanctuary and Sheehan Hall are getting near their functional life. And as you know, we've had some, and we've got a flat roof up there between the sanctuary and the north ax and Sheehan Hall and the like, that's got some water penetration issues that we have to look at. That would not come out of a capital project. That should be out of a repair or the maintenance, right? And Joe, maybe you could address that a little bit.
Well, you know, a while back, we sold a piece of property, or we collected some money on a piece of property that the state wanted to use for the expansion of Peavon Road. And right now, we have $45,000 sitting in a reserve account to support any operational needs that we have, primarily to take care of, it was primarily set aside to take care of the entrances to the church and some landscaping in front of the church, but the state took care of all that for us. So we still have $45,000 sitting there. We're going to use some of that for possibly the repair of the roof. It's there, it's not in, it's not in the funds that we have available for operations. It's always, it's separated. And so therefore, we have as a set aside fund to help us in our efforts to either repair the roof or some other things that may come up that where we need the money. And it appears that the flat roof needs to be repaired and it's going to take a good portion of that $45,000 to do that. And we need to do that in order to expand, if we're going to expand the church, we're going to need to do that.
It was at this part of our live stream that we lost the audio portion of our broadcast. Fortunately, the actual presentation was over and we were going into a question and answer segment. Questions and answers that were addressed during the remainder of the meeting will be summarized and posted on our website and Facebook. We apologize for the inconvenience.